I'm Duncan Berry, I'm Chair of the Planning Board. I'm calling this meeting to order according to Mass Law. Anyone who intends to record the meeting must first notify the Chair, who will then inform the other attendees. Does anybody intend to record? Okay. I would like to invite you all to join me in rising and citing the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Now, I'd like to start with a couple of general announcements. The first of which is that we have had a resignation on the board by Mr. Craig Chadwick, who's served this board for many years very dutifully. He's going to be terribly missed. He was a beacon of due diligence and curiosity and fair play and decency. And he's, you know, set a very high standard. I really, I think we all are going to miss him. But because of that, I want to make sure that I thank him if he's listening. If he's not listening, I'll tell him in person, but I really appreciate his service. And we look forward, if anybody up here is interested or knows about people that might want to serve on this board, please, you know, contact, I guess it's the Clerk's Office, and fill out the form, and you'll connect to the Board of Selectmen, and we can begin a process that way. Because of that, and because of the delay of a, another member on our board tonight, unforeseen, but it does happen, we want to make sure that the hearings tonight get due and proper attention with the full complement, so you do not have to come back, or that there needs to be no reason to continue a future hearing from this point going forward. So with that in mind, we're changing the order of battle tonight. We're going to be dealing with the public meeting material for the site plan review for the town wastewater first, and then the next grid matter. And if we have Ms. Maslowski in by that time, we will then go ahead with the, the public hearings. If not, we will continue on with some of the board business that we have. So with that said, I would assume that there's probably a fairly good complement of people who are here for, I believe it's the second case here, the continued case for 86 miles. I don't think we're going to get to it for at least 30 minutes, so if you'd like to step out or whatever, you know, or be educated and stay, that's fine too. But this is going to be, there's a change of order here, so plan accordingly. So, we will kick off the meeting this evening with public meeting on request for waivers for a site plan review from town wastewater pump stations. And what we're going to do is, we're going to go one by one, right? And would you like, was I going to read them all in, or just one at a time? I can't remember. One at a time, okay. So we'll do, we'll go, one at a time. Good evening, gentlemen.
Good evening.
We'll start this evening with case number PB 2024-02, Town of Harwich, care of Daniel Pelletier, Harwich Water Department, 196 Chatham Road, Harwich, Mass. 02645, for the property located at Bova Cove Traffic Circle, Assessors Map 126, in the RR zoning district.
Excuse me. I apologize for interrupting. Do you accept public comment?
Not at this time. We're, I just opened a public hearing, so please, we've got a process going on.
So at which meeting can you, do you accept public comment?
We deal with public comment on cases that are open and before consideration. We don't have a general, this is not the Select Board. We don't just, we have business to attend to, that's, all right? Thank you. Sorry for the delay. Good to see you this evening. Happy New Year.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, if I may. For the record, Joe Powers, Town Administrator, and representing the applicant, which technically is the Select Board for the Town of Harwich. I'm joined this evening by Jeff Gregg. He is Project Director, and he is our resource from our engineering firm, GHD. And we thank you for your time and attention this evening. And really, we're relying upon, or we agree with staff review and report. We would stand by that. I'm certainly here to answer any questions if you have them. The town considers this to be relatively straightforward and administrative, but we'll defer to you folks, but thank you.
Great. Ms. Flynn?
Thank you. Good evening. Pursuant to Harwich zoning 32555, the town has requested five site plan review waivers. And after reviewing the water pump station applications for the town, staff recommends that the Planning Board grant all five waivers for the site plan review based on the following, based on the following reasons. Phase three of the wastewater pumps, pump stations are essential infrastructure servicing the Town of Harwich. The water pump station projects have been supported by the town and have been publicly vetted at multiple stages of the comprehensive wastewater management planning, planning process, the capital infrastructure plant, planning process, as well as annual town meeting, in addition to other regulatory review processes, including at the local level, a recent approval by the Harwich Zoning Board of Appeals. And third, the town, the town administration and the wastewater department have done extensive outreach to the butters and neighbors to help address, mitigate potential impacts to the surrounding neighborhood. The town has provided additional landscaping and screening to minimize any noise or visual impacts to the surrounding neighborhoods.
Great, thank you. Any questions from the board? Any questions from the public? Please address the podium with your name and where you live.
My name is Ted Nelson. I live on the corner of Route 39 and Pleasant Bay Road. I'm not sure if this is the time for the public comment with regards to the fifth item, PB 2024-06.
Why don't you wait, because we're going to go through one at a time. I can come right up at that time. Thank you. Mr. Nelson? Any further comment, questions? Hearing none? I entertain a motion to approve. Approve the request for site plan review, the waivers.
We did, I did include.
The language in the.
The language in 32555, Section F, as part of the staff report.
Okay.
So it's the last, the last.
Yep. Yep, where did we put that?
It's F. This one?
Is it this? Is it this?
Yes, Section F.
Great.
I'd like to make a motion to approve case PB 2024-02, Town of Harwich, with the following conditions. You want the conditions first?
Sure.
With the following conditions. Reasonable measures are implemented to provide for screening of parking areas or other parts of the premises for adjoining premises from the street by walls, fences, planting, or other devices. B, the convenience and safety of vehicular pedestrian traffic are enhanced. And C, surface water from the parking areas and driveways will be effectively and safely disposed by means of proper drainage systems as specified in the Board's approval. Those are the.
Those are the conditions.
Conditions.
Yep. Any questions? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Someone has a second.
Oh yeah, there's no second.
Oh, excuse me, we have a second. I'm sorry. We have a second. We have a motion and a second. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
We now move on to case number PB 2024-03, Standard Woods Standish Woods Association, care of Joseph F. Powers, Town of Harwich, 732 Main Street, Harwich, Mass. 02645, for the property located at Zero Standish Woods Circle, Assessors Map 112, Parcel C5-64, in the RR zoning district. Do we have the same conditions for site plan review that would?
Correct.
So it's all the same, so your report is valid for each of the five?
Correct.
Okay. Is there any further elucidation from the applicant on this matter?
The only, I guess, the only concern I have on Bova Cove is that it is going to be limited on to what we, there is no parking spaces there. And it's going to be, we have vegetation shown and landscaping, but it is an incredibly small spot, so we won't, we aren't going to, we weren't planning on having a fence. We had a guardrail. So I just wanted to make sure that if, as the conditions come out.
Right.
That when I'm, you know, we could do more at a lot of the other sites. That site is, I don't know if you've been there.
Yeah. Yeah, it's supposed to stand. So why don't we, can you amend the motion accordingly?
I'd like to make amendment to.
Or motion?
Like, make a motion for amendment to the conditions for case PB 2024-02, Town of Harwich.
03.
We're going back to 02, is that right?
Oh, excuse me. I'm sorry.
Back to 02. I'd like to make amendment for, would you say, Part A? Is that the?
Sure.
Reasonable measures are implemented to provide for screening for other parts of the premises, for adjoining premises from the street by walls, fences, planting, or other devices.
Yeah, so we can, yeah, we were planning on.
Right. Okay. That amendment, can we have a second? We have a second? All in favor? Aye. Okay. Sorry about that. So moving ahead to Standish Woods, PB 2024-03, as articulated before. Any further comments on that? No? Any comments from the public? I entertain a motion for this.
Before I entertain a motion, would that same apply here for Standish Woods?
Standish Woods, we have a fence, we have plantings around.
Parking.
There's parking, it's going to be porous pavers. It's a, it's more of a access way, but yes.
I'll keep it in.
So I think it was fine for, for that one.
Okay.
I think Wilma's Way, there's no, there's a pull-off, so. I'm trying to think if there are any others that don't really have parking. So I think it's really Bova Cove, just didn't have the parking.
Okay. I'd like to entertain a motion for case PB 2024-03, Standish Woods Association, care of Joseph Powers, Town of Harwich, for the following conditions of approval. A, reasonable measures are implemented to provide for screening of parking areas or other parts of the premises for adjoining premises from the street by walls, fence, fences, plantings, or other devices. B, the convenience and safety of the vehicular and pedestrian traffic are enhanced. And C, surface water from the parking areas and driveways will be efficiently and safely disposed by means of proper drainage systems as specified in the Board's approval.
I have a motion, and we have a second from Ms. Rudy. Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. All opposed? Motion passes unanimously. We move on now to case number PB 2024-04, Town of Harwich, care of Dan Pelletier, 196 Chatham Road, Harwich, Mass. 02645, for the property located at the intersection of Route 39 and Church Street, Traffic Island, Assessors Map 126, in the RR zoning district. Any comments on this property? None? The recommendation from the town remains?
Correct.
Any comments from the public at large? I entertain a motion.
I'd like to make a motion to approve case PB 2024-04, Town of Harwich, care of Daniel Pelletier, 196 Chatham Road, Harwich, Mass. 02645, the following conditions of approval. A, reasonable measures are implemented to provide for screening of parking areas or other parts of the premises for adjoining premises or from the street by walls, fences, plantings, or other devices. B, the convenience and safety of vehicular and pedestrian traffic are enhanced. And C, surface water from parking areas and driveways will be efficiently and safely disposed by means of a proper drainage system as specified in the Board's approval.
I have a motion. We have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. We move on to case number PB 2024-05. Whoops.
Can I ask a question?
Yes, of course.
The improve, the improvements to traffic and pedestrians, is it, could you read that?
The convenience and safety of vehicular and pedestrian traffic are enhanced.
So, and could you just clarify what enhanced means? So that I, I just, I want to make sure if we're not, if we haven't enhanced, I want to make sure that we meet the requirement of what you're looking for.
Ms. Flynn?
For the waiver, you know, if they're not having an impact, it's negligible, so there's no impact to, or no improvement. So I think the Board can clarify it and say there's no impact or change, or significant change to the neighbors of the surrounding area.
Okay.
Yeah, and I, it's a, it's a cut-through driveway, let's call it, for lack of a better term, that's the access. But I just want to make sure that if we need to do something else, then, then we've accounted for it. So that's what I just wanted to make sure I understood.
So instead of enhanced, go to negligible?
Negligible, or it will remain the same.
Maintain.
So we're going to have a motion to amend?
I'd like to make a motion to amend.
Sorry.
That's okay. The conditions for case PB 2024-04, Town of Harwich, care of Daniel Pelletier, 196 Chatham Road, Harwich, Mass. 02645, Section B, the convenience and safety of vehicular and pedestrian traffic are, we will change enhanced to remain the same.
Maintained. Or negligible.
The convenience and safety of vehicular and pedestrian traffic are negligible. That's my motion.
We have a motion, we have a second? We have a second? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. This evening, we next go on to case number PB 2024-05, Rockstar Brian Springsteen from New Jersey, care of, excuse me, Brian Springsteen, care of Joseph F. Powers, Town of Harwich, 732 Main Street, Harwich, Mass. 02645, for the property located at Three Wilma's Way, Assessors Map 117, Parcel P1-1, in the RR zoning district. Is there, let's. To avoid further amendments.
Yeah, I guess it's the same amendment on the enhanced, but everything else, we're providing, we're providing the screening, we're doing porous pavers instead of having an actual paved driveway to.
So we'll just say the traffic or the convenience are, you know, the impairment is negligible?
Right.
Okay. You good on that?
Yep.
Okay. Any comments from the public? Any further considerations?
Nothing is strange.
Okay. I'd like to make a motion to approve case PB 2024-05, Brian Springsteen, care of Joseph Powers, Town of Harwich, 732 Main Street, Harwich, Mass. 02645, the following conditions of approval. A, reasonable measures are implemented to provide for screening of parking areas or other park, parts of the premises for adjoining premises or from the street by walls, fences, plantings, or other devices. B, the convenience and safety of the vehicular and pedestrian traffic are negligible. C, surface water from the parking areas and driveways will be efficiently and safety, safely disposed of by means of proper drainage systems as specified in the Board's approval.
You have a motion, may I have a second? Do we have a second? Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. And we finally come to case number PB 24, 2024-06, Town of Harwich, care of Daniel Pelletier, 196 Chatham Road, Harwich, Mass. 02645, for the property located at Zero Pleasant Bay Road, Assessors Map 114, in the RR zoning district. Any questions from the board? Mr. Nelson? This is your time.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I want to get clarification of where Zero is on Pleasant Bay Road. Is that the lot that's closest to Orleans Road? Or is it the other end close to 28?
Is it okay if I just show?
Yes, please. So it's the Bay End?
Bay End, that's the.
So just a question on this. In the, in the comprehensive wastewater management plan, Phase Two, it talked about where the sewers are being laid, and this area is not part of Phase Two. It stops further back on Orleans Road and doesn't turn down Pleasant Bay Road yet. And I believe that was put off to like Phase Six or Eight, or whatever it was, because of wondering about the mitigation from Muddy Creek changes, and whether or not it was even going to need to be sewered and that sort of thing. So I'm here to find out why we would be doing this so early if we don't yet know, I don't know if we know about the mitigation factors, if we're, if that's improving that we don't have to sewer it, or we have to sewer it. But why we're pushing this out of the geography of Phase Two further into later phases.
Great question. Mr. Powers, or Mr. Gregg?
First, I would say that the pump stations that are being presented and adjudicated this evening are for Phase Three of the, what we now refer to as watershed management plan. So we're, we're well past Phase Two and solely focused on Phase Three. Within that, we have two contracts, Contract 1E and 2W, 1E, 1 East and 2 West. And these areas have been targeted for sewer installation, and I defer to Mr. Gregg as to the relativity of the location of the pump station. But in that area, this is going to be Phase Three. For future phases, as you'll see at town meeting in our capital plan, we are not contemplating anything at this point beyond Phase Three because of external influences in the town, if I could say it that way.
Right.
We don't have a treatment facility or any plans so far.
Right.
But these are all in Phase Three, which is our next phase.
So Mr. Nelson, does that help? Does that partially answer?
To, to clarify, when the original plan was done, there was a Phase Three and a Phase Eight, and this includes parts of both of those actual phases.
Okay.
Because of how the town was moving forward with addressing nitrogen load in Round Cove and Pleasant Bay
Right.
and the associated subwatersheds.
Right.
So we're only going up a portion of Pleasant Bay Road to the east. And we're going further to the west, but it does include multiple of phases that were identified previously.
Okay.
If I could add further.
Please.
I want to thank Jeff for that. You may recall that in both October of 2021, October of 2022, we had two special town meetings. And at the first one in 2021, the Board through town meeting hired GHD to revise our phasing. So what was originally, as Jeff has said, Phases Three through Eight, where the, it's technically our new Phase Three.
Right.
Under our, what was CWMP, which we now have to call based on DEP watershed management.
Okay.
So it was elements of the old plan. We are constantly revising the new plan, and that's what brings us to what we now refer to as Phase Three.
Reorg.
I hope that, right, I hope that was clear.
Thank you.
Fully understand. I appreciate the clarification. Just leading to two questions. One is, it does Phase Three include not just the pump station, but actually the searing down to the pump station for the houses that are from that pump station back?
So.
There's a searing later.
Yeah, so Phase Three will include gravity sewer on Pleasant Bay from roughly, is it?
Church Street.
Pheasant, Pheasant, no, what's?
Church Street.
No, I'm thinking there's a, on Pleasant Bay, on the eastern portion of Pleasant Bay from, so if Orleans Road is the, is the intersection point, we're moving east from Orleans Route 39. We're going partway up the hill, but not all the way to the top of the hill. So we're going just basically past that large parcel that you see there with gravity sewer. And then it's, and then that is stopping there. And then we're going west on Pleasant Bay Road to Elm Street. So just past Round, Round Cove Road?
Right.
Yeah. So that's kind of the, what's called the east and west boundaries of Pleasant, of the work that's on Pleasant, that's proposed on Pleasant Bay.
And that's Phase Three?
That's the phase.
That'll include the piping as well as the pump station?
Yeah, because the, yeah, that flows all, the Pleasant Bay East Pumping Station, which is what we're calling it at that parcel, is going to be like the, the main pumping station, because it was a town-owned property. We had a lot more real estate, and it's sort of centrally located. So flow is going to be coming there from those two different directions.
Do you know whether or not the results of the mitigation of the Muddy Creek changes have come in? That it's, we, do we need those searing?
So I know that there's discussions with the Pleasant Bay Alliance with regards to all the various different modeling that's been done with regards to that. But as, as of the watershed permit that the town has right now that we're operating under, we need to mitigate this nitrogen. And so we kind of calculated it based on. And that's where, why the Phase Three area became Phase Three sort of plus.
So if I may, Mr. Chairman, that was the, those are the data points, and that's the information that informed town to revise the plan for what we're now proposing. What we now describe as Phase Three.
So we did get enough data points to determine that?
Correct.
Somebody could.
Correct.
I think that's all I need to, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Nelson. Any additional questions from the board or from the public? Please step up to the podium, give us your name and address, please.
Brian Springsteen, Three Wilma's Way.
Mr. Spring, Springsteen, thank you.
Just want to know what the procedures are for that pumping house. It's on the corner of the lot there. We've got some paperwork here, but I just don't understand it.
I take it you're talking about the one we just passed?
Yeah, the one I just walked in, and I just heard my name, and I sat down.
Okay, well, I'm afraid that's a matter of, this is going to be a historical account at this point, so I'd let you, if you want to go ahead, please go ahead.
You're probably talking about, you've gotten some easement papers, probably?
Yeah, from Dan, and.
So right now, the town, I don't know, Joe, do you want to talk about what are the processes in terms of?
Certainly, yeah. So this action tonight by Planning Board waiving site plan review follows on the ZBA hearing, or excuse me, Zoning Board of Appeals hearing that happened at the end of November for variances. So we were granted the variance, we waived site plan review. All of that allows the town to then proceed to many of butters that are impacted for easement relief.
What's the easement relief? I mean, on.
So it could be damages, if you will, so nominal dollar amount. It could be landscaping, but it's a direct conversation between the town, Mr. Pelletier and I, reaching out to the butters. But that, that aspect does not impact what they're doing tonight. So they could do the site plan waivers. It doesn't change the fact that we'll still be working with the butters on mediation and damages for the takers.
So that.
Oh, that comes as later in this process.
Yeah, so the document that you should have gotten was a, a plan that shows sort of where we, where we want to have the easement.
Right.
And then the town's going to sit down with you. They have an appraiser, appraisal going on. And when they have that value, then they can sit down with you and go over all that in detail and, and, you know.
And bring you up to date to a lot of.
And.
It gets closer.
Correct. Yes, so that's, you know, and then we have.
It's my neighbor, I think it's number two there, too. Next time you're. That's what I.
So this is the proposed landscaping around that location, and it's just porous pavers in the front, guardrail, and then.
Oh, that's right across from the woods that, my house is up in the corner.
Your house is way over, yeah, your house. So this is, this is where the station would be.
So this is...this is where the station would be. That's your house.
And up in the corner. And then... And he'll be aware of that too, because he's an older guy. He can't get in, can't come down here. So people will be talking to him too when it comes to that?
Correct. But yeah, we weren't seeking an easement from him directly.
Just that corner of the lot?
Yeah, just this piece on your lot. I can certainly leave you with that set of plan.
If those are yours.
Oh, no, I think I have, I think I might even have that from Dan, Dan even sent me. This is all new to me.
Yeah, but this one's a...take these and these are at least more zoomed in. If you have comments, we'll have that and be able to have that discussion with the town when they...
I'll talk to you next. Correct. If the board approves these waivers, it does nothing to our next tranche of Butters.
Gotcha.
Thank you.
Thank you.
One additional comment, Mr. Nelson?
Yeah. Sorry, I just remembered the other question I wanted to ask because of the amendments on how things were looking. What is it going to look like at Zero Pleasant Bay Road as far as parking and that question?
The station's going to be set back from the road. We're proposing the landscape around it's all woods, all around it. And then this is slightly down gradient.
Yep.
Because it actually goes into a low spot.
Exactly. Oh, you have raised it, okay.
Yeah, to grade around. And then this is going to be just the core, the concrete forest pavers. So they'll look like a little patches you might see at a resort or something like that.
And this effect is similar to what, like you've done on Church Street, coming up the hill?
I don't remember how far Church Street is. Like I don't recall how far back that pumping station is. Some of them are kind of closer to the road. So this is...
Looks like it's further back.
Yeah, this one's at least...
Basically it has enough room for one vehicle.
Yeah.
If it's needed.
Yeah, it's basically a turnaround here and then a pull off.
Thank you.
Great, thank you, sir. Okay. Any further questions? Let's take a motion, if we may.
I'd like to make a motion to approve case PB 2024-06, Town of Harwich, care of Daniel Pelletier, 196 Chatham Road, Harwich, Mass. 02645 for the property located at Zero Pleasant Bay Road with the following conditions of approval. A, reasonable measures are implemented to provide for screening of parking areas or other parts of premises for adjoining premises from the street by walls, fences, plantings, or other devices. B, the convenience and safety of vehicular and pedestrian traffic are negligible. C, surface water from the parking areas and driveways will be efficiently and safely disposed of by means of proper drainage system as specified in the board's approval.
Have a motion, may I have a second? We have a second. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Mr. Gregg, Mr. Powers, thank you so much for your time this evening.
Thank you.
Good luck and Godspeed.
Thank you, thank you very much.
So we move on then this evening to case number PB 2020-27, NextGrid Inc. requests an extension on a site plan review special permit to establish a large-scale photovoltaic array for the property at Zero Depot Road, which decision was filed with the town clerk on January 14, 2021, and extended for one year on January 10, 2023. Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Nathan Collins. I am Senior Manager of Engineering for NextGrid. And as noted, we are here before the board requesting an additional one-year extension on our special permit for the proposed large-scale solar array at Zero Depot Road. The reason for our request, the project at no fault to NextGrid, has been placed in what's called the Cape Group Distribution Study. It's a study conducted by Eversource. Our understanding is the study is complete. However, Eversource and the Department of Public Utilities are in final kind of negotiations on what the fees are going to be for the developers, for us to complete our interconnection. So we don't actually have an interconnection service agreement in place, which means we couldn't finalize a project if we started to construct it. We do have a contractor under contract. We have started the building permit application with the town. And we do anticipate starting construction as soon as, you know, weather permits and permits are all in place, with the intent that we will have final ISA. We're told in the next few months, you know, obviously Eversource is on their own schedule. But we do anticipate that there will not be a need for any additional extensions. And we should be able to get this project completed by the end of this calendar year.
Great, okay. Any questions from the board? Or first from a report from the town?
Mr. Chair, I would recommend an administrative extension for the recorded extension.
Great. Any questions from the board about extensions? Any comment from the public or online?
I'm sorry, Mr. Chair, one question.
Yeah, please.
This isn't impacted, I think I know the answer to this, but this isn't impacted by any of the changes we made to the bylaws back from the spring.
I don't think so, no. Because I think this predates all that, right? So this is...
I just didn't know.
So I think it's pretty straightforward. Do we have language for a motion to your satisfaction, Mr. Peterson? Conditions of approval? Or is it just simply a vote to extend?
We're just...
Vote to extend, okay.
I'd like to make a motion to...make a vote to extend...oh, hold on. I'd like to make a motion to approve an extension for case PB 2020-27, NextGrid Inc. On a site plan review special permit to establish a large-scale photovoltaic array for the property at Zero Depot Road, which the decision was originally filed with the town clerk on 11421, and extended for one year on January 10, 2023, extended to January 10, 2024.
That should be out of it, yes.
Actually, make it 2025.
Five, yes, sorry.
January 10, 2025.
Otherwise it's tomorrow.
Right, exactly. You forgot, 24 hours.
For good, we're not that good.
Okay. All right, we have a motion. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Wait a minute. We need a second. Thank you for the second. All in favor? Aye. Thank you so much for your patience this evening. So we are... Hey, I just did a 2023, real, like a big gaffe. Found a document, went out to like a thousand people on email. Nothing like proofreading. So we still are lacking Ms. Maslowski, who we will want to have as a central player in the public hearing portions. So these are going to be, again, out of order. So we will continue with some new business. It's 7:09. I suspect that we're probably, since we're closing in on the 45-minute mark, we'll probably have another few minutes to wait and then we'll reassess there. But so new business, we have a covenant release to sign for Shelley Path, which I have right here. So we need to get, it's two sets of signatures, correct?
Correct.
So what I'm going to do is, I'm assuming I can't do it in red ink. So may I borrow your pen?
And Mr. Chair, if you could hold off, you're going to sign the document in front of the town clerk tomorrow.
Oh, this is the one we're signing? All right, so, okay.
For each of the, for the three documents and the Mylar.
Okay, so, but the rest of the board can sign?
Rest of the board can sign and you're a witness too.
Okay, I will be signing kind of in loco parentis kind of a thing here, right? Whatever you call it. I'm sure there's a good Latin phrase for that. In loco commitatus.
Periantis is like for boarding schools.
Yes, exactly.
And colleges.
Now, you need, they need to sign the Mylar as well, right?
Correct.
Okay, do we have the Mylar pen? Because that is a...
Sharpie.
A Sharpie, usually very...why don't we set that up on the table out front?
So will the date of endorsement actually be tomorrow or tonight?
Tonight, and you can...yes.
So we just sign that now, right?
Yeah, go right ahead and sign that.
Come back to you, right?
Very good, yep. I'll be signing this in the morning. Because we have a few other things we can go through here.
Yep.
That'll carry us.
Yep.
Okay, so we got that. We can approve the minutes.
Yep.
I wanted to take a quick look at the minutes.
That was that short, you know?
Right. Because I don't think there was any, there was, there was one vote that was an abstention, right? Or am I thinking of it wrong, meaning?
Yeah.
All right, has everybody had a chance to look at the minutes? Okay.
Make a motion to approve the minutes as written for December 12, 2023.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Okay, so we also have an opportunity to hear from our planner, Development Officer Ms. Flynn, on the comprehensive town planning update.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. As you may or may not know, the town is heavily involved in three planning processes. We are updating our local comprehensive plan for the town. And we are also updating our housing production plan as well as our open space and recreation plan. And if you haven't seen these posters around town, we have a local comprehensive survey on the town website. And we are encouraging members of the community to please take some, take 10 or 15 minutes to fill out the survey. The questions are really about how we want to chart the future of Harwich. And in terms of what are the most important priorities for the town, whether it's affordable housing, economic development, open space and recreation, preserving our natural resources. It's really important that we try to get as much feedback from the community to help guide these documents going forward. I will also provide periodic updates to the planning board as well as to the public regarding upcoming community engagement meetings starting in March and April. And we want, we hope that you look for these meeting announcements. And we strongly encourage you all to participate and attend these meetings and provide some input and guidance into our community. So, thank you.
Thank you. We also have some comments on the rules and responsibilities training coming up.
Yes, on February, on Wednesday, February 7, from 4:00 to 6:00 p.m., we will have a joint meeting between the zoning board of appeals and the planning board. And our town council, Amy Cossel, will be on hand to walk us through some of the general roles and responsibilities for each of the boards and just provide some guidance and input procedurally. So this is open, this is a public meeting. It's open to the members and as well as town hall staff.
Great.
So, thank you.
Thank you. So we are now at the 7:15 mark. I would like to impose a 15-minute recess. And we will then return again. The inconvenience, hopefully it will be repaid multiple times over the course of the hearings that we'll be listening to as the new year starts. So, thank you. 7:30, we start. And I haven't heard from Mary. Has anybody heard from Mary? Just since 6:30. Just since 6:30. Nothing yet. No ETA? I just TM'd. Just checked. The... So, we are going to go ahead right now with the public hearing section of the meeting, starting with case number PB 2023-35, which is continued from November 28th, 2023. Row Oliver nominee trust David Crosby and Stephen Farnsworth trustees, through their agent attorney Benjamin Zander, seek a site plan special review... Excuse me. Site plan review special permit to develop a portion of the property as a self-storage unit and as a change of use from a two-family to a multifamily pursuant to the Harwich zoning bylaw sections 325-51 and 325-55. The property is located at 48481 Depot Street, MAP 36, parcel B1, in the IL and the RR zoning districts. This is being continued, is my understanding?
Yes, this is being continued to Tuesday, March 12th, 2024.
Okay.
No sooner, no earlier than 6:30 p.m.
So, we want to make a... Thank you.
I'd like to make a motion to continue case PB 2023-35 until Tuesday, March 12th, 2024, no sooner than 6:30 p.m.
We have a second? We have a second? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Okay. Good evening. We now... Yeah. We now move to case number PB 2024-01. Coastline Construction Incorporated, through its agent attorney James Norcross, is seeking a modification of a site plan special permit in order to construct a small addition and deck. This application is pursuant to the Harwich zoning bylaw sections 325-55, as directed by Mass. General Law, Chapter 48, Section 9, properties located at 466 Route 28, MAP 13, parcel F8-B1, in the Commercial Village CV and Residential Medium RM zoning districts. Good evening, sir.
Good evening. For the record, my name is James Norcross, representing Coastline Construction.
Mr. Norcross, thank you for your patience.
No, of course, Mr. Chair. No problem at all. With me this evening is Joe Young, the owner of Coastline Construction, and we are here for a modification to a site plan special permit. This property is actually part of a condominium that consists of four total buildings, three commercial buildings, and there's a residential structure in the back. Joe purchased the building that's located the front right of the property about a year ago, which consists of office space, and so Joe's plan is to do a small addition to square off the back of the property to create a little bit more office space for his company on the inside. He's also planning an addition of a porch, farmer's porch on the front of the building. The buildings actually date back to 1850, according to the assessor's card, so they went to the Historical Commission, and the Historical Commission suggested the addition of the farmer's porch would be a nice feature to the property to bring back some of that historic characteristic, and Joe's on board with that, so I think that's going to be a nice improvement to the exterior. There's really no site changes proposed with the addition, with the exception of the two additions. Parking is currently adequate. There's really not going to be a need for additional parking. It's for office staff and for client meetings for Joe's company. So, that would be our presentation, and happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much, Mr. Norcross. Ms. Flynn?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm just downloading a PowerPoint presentation for you. Are we all set to share? It's not allowing me to share. Thank you for your patience. Thank you. Okay, thank you very much. Just for a reference, this is the town of Harwich, and the project is located in the village of Harwich Port on Route 20... Off of Route 28, 46. The address of 466 Route 28. And the applicant... The zoning district is the Commercial Village, as well as the Residential Watering Zoning District. There are four buildings on the property, and as you can see, the building to the far north is in the Residential Medium, and the application really concerns the building off of Route 28, and it's... The addition will be right here to be squared off, and the porch will be right here. And the addition is 229 square feet, square foot addition, and the deck or front porch will be 129 square feet. And the applicant is seeking a modification to a site plan review special permit that was granted in August of 1986. The applicant is also looking to... For zoning, for ZBA relief for the required setbacks for the Commercial Village District. The applicable laws for a modification of a site plan review is pursuant to section 325, 325-55 code of the Harwich zoning. And the application was given to the Board of Health, Water, Fire, Conservation, Public Works, Police Department, and there were no concerns that were specified. We had requested comments and concerns from the various town departments. The... As cited in the staff report, there's a form A narrative municipal lien, existing proposed conditions of the land in Harwich, and there are floor plan drawings as well that are existing, as well as proposed by the applicant, and deed for the property that's dated 11/10/2021. The butter application, as well as the application fee. Also included in this is the recommended findings for the board's consideration. Mr. Chair, do you want me to read through all of those?
No, I think we're good.
Okay. And the recommended motions are highlighted, and one comment I would make a note is if there is... If the board votes to approve the project with conditions, if you could approve the project pending ZBA approval.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Any questions for the board? Thank you, by the way, Murray. I appreciate you coming here. This is a little busy day for you. Thank you.
So, my one question is, where do you need the zoning relief?
We're non-conforming to the setback to the east currently, and so it's a pre-existing nonconformity, and so we're maybe seeking a special permit for that condition.
And it's just squaring off, basically, the line of the building, right?
Exactly right, yep.
So, how does... That's just basically going to... Is that going to extend the one, like the eastward gable down? And it's not going to change the roof line or anything, right? I mean...
Not going to change the roof line. Joe, you might be able to, if you have some specifics on the building plans.
How you doing? My name is Joe Young, owner of Coastline Construction.
So what we're looking to do there is, and we've already been approved with the historic, is that we will be taking that roof line off, just the roof, so it's a continuous gable all the way down.
That's right.
So, that's what, and squaring it off just gives us all offices on the first floor for everyone that's on staff, so we don't have someone just upstairs randomly. So that's what we're trying to do.
Great. Thank you. Any further questions?
None, to me.
Looks pretty straightforward. Any comments from the public? Well, I would accept the motion to close the hearing. What about the second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. So anybody want to step up? You're batting a thousand tonight.
I'd like to make a motion to do the findings first. I'd like to make a motion for case PB 2021-01 Coastline Construction through its agent attorney James Norcross, seeking mod- wait, hold on. I'd like to make a motion, cancel that. I'd like to make a motion on case PB 2024-01 Coastline Construction Incorporated to-
We're doing 2024-01, the bottom.
Sorry, 2020-
Yeah.
I'd like to make a motion, case PB 2024-01 Coastline Construction for approval.
So all you want to do is adopt the recommended findings?
Yep, to adopt the recommended findings.
And then I'd read them on page two.
And recommended findings are, number one, the applicant is the property owner of 466-1 Route 28. Two, subject property address is 466-1 Route 28, Harwich Port, Mass. Map 13 parcel F8-B1. And it's a condo building on a lot which is 41,745 square feet, located within the Commercial Village and Residential Medium Density zoning districts. Three, the current use of the property is professional business office used by Coastline Construction. Four, the applicant proposes to build a 229-square-foot office addition and a, is it 129 or 5?
Sorry, of course, my handwriting there is the hundred and it hasn't listed, I believe it's 129. 125, I'm trying to see if you had it on the sorry, if anyone wants a second.
I just wanted to make.
Let's see, six by, 125 is correct, yep.
In a 125-square-foot deck slash porch, the applicant requires zoning board of appeals relief for the pre-existing nonconforming side setback in the CV district. Five, the applicant has applied to the planning board for a modification of a site plan review special permit granted in 1986 pursuant to the section 325-55 of the Harwich zoning bylaw. Six, there'll be a slight expansion of the structure. Seven, the application was filed with the town of Harwich on December 11th, 2023. Eight, subject to the conditions of approval stated herein, the application site plan as modified conformed to sections 325-55 of the Harwich code. Nine, planning board held a public hearing on the application January 9th, 2024.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes.
I'd like to make a motion, case PB 2024-01 Coastline Construction Incorporated to approve the modification of a site plan special permit for 466-1 Route 28, Harwich Port, Mass. 02646, pending ZBA approval for the zoning setback relief with the following conditions. The proposed redevelopment shall be in accordance with the site plan referenced in the application materials above. Two, the decision shall run with the property. Three, the decision shall not be effective until it's accorded with the Barnstable Registry of Deeds, Barnstable County Registry of Deeds. Four, changes to the site not authorized under this decision will require further planning board review and modification to this decision. Five, the applicant shall conform to the inspection, certification, and as-built plan requirements outlined pursuant to the code of the town of Harwich.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Norcross. Thank you for your patience this evening. Appreciate your endurance. So good evening. So finally, we get to case number PB 2023-34, continued from November 28th, 2023. Karen and George Oliver, through their agent Kent Rushella, have applied for a special permit for a two-family dwelling in order to build a second residential structure connected by a roof or a series of roofs. The application is pursuant to the code of the town of Harwich, chapter 325-51N as directed by Mass. General Law, chapter 48, section 9. Property located at 46, 86 Mile Street. Assessor's map 14 parcel B9. Property is located in the RL zoning district. Happy New Year and good evening, gentlemen.
Good evening. So for the record, my name is Charles Sabat. I'm an attorney. I'm representing the Olivers, who are the applicants in this hearing tonight. And with me is Kendra Shilla, who is their agent. And we also have with us tonight Thad Eldridge, who is the surveyor who prepared the site plan and the septic plan that is in your file. So if I may start with the background of this or the details of this proposal. This is a request for a permit, special permit, under your bylaw section 325-51N, seeking a special permit to allow a two-family dwelling. And that provision provides that special permits for two-family dwellings may be granted upon a determination by the planning board that the following criteria have been met. And one is that the lot area must contain a minimum of 40,000 square feet of contiguous upland in all applicable zoning districts. And this particular lot meets that criteria. This lot is approximately 47,000 square feet. The floor area of each dwelling unit shall be a minimum of 800 square feet. This application meets that requirement. The existing dwelling that is there now, which is a single-family home, is approximately 33,000 square feet, 3,065 square feet. The proposed dwelling is 2,820 square feet. So this application meets that prong of the, of the bylaw. Number three is that there must be a common roof or a series of roofs that shall connect the dwelling units. And I'll come back to that in a moment. But this plan meets that provision as well because this, the proposed second family dwelling or second dwelling will be connected by a series of roofs, as shown on the plan. And as I say, I'll come back and address that in a moment. Number four, there is a requirement that there shall be two off-street parking spaces per each unit. And we have met that requirement in that there are an adequate number of spaces for the existing structure, and we are providing for two spaces for the proposed second dwelling. This property is, as I said, is some 47,000 square feet in size, somewhat over an acre. It is, current use is a single-family dwelling. It is located in an RL residential zoning district. And the impetus for this proposal is that my clients have a disabled granddaughter that, that they would like to provide some living space for, for her and her family that is handicap compliant. And if you look at closely at the floor plans, you'll see that there are wide doorways. One of the bathrooms, the shower, has no ledge on it, specially designed for that. The kitchen will be handicap accessible. So the intent here is, and the impetus here, is to use this for the Oliver family, members of the Oliver family, and in particular, their disabled granddaughter. When we were here last time, someone questioned whether or not that was in fact the case. This was when we had the earlier application, and my client has prepared an affidavit, which I'm prepared to submit. But he states that the purpose of the affidavit is to affirm that his granddaughter, Grace Cameron Oliver, has a handicap. And he describes it as that she was born to Michael and Kara Oliver in Children's Hospital of Philadelphia on June 19, 2022, with lissencephaly, which is a brain anomaly. This condition leads to a short life expectancy with severe development challenges. Her conditions require full-time care with significant equipment to facilitate her mobility and development. So the impetus of the, of this design is to provide for living space for her, for a staff person that will help her, and for a family member, so that she can and her family can enjoy this property in the summertime, along with the other members of the Oliver family. So this is not intended as a rental property or as additional income or anything of that nature. The, the proposed new unit will be two stories, will be three bedrooms. There will be a single car garage attached to it. As you can see, the access will be out to Grassy Pond Road, which I stress is a public way. The building commissioner and the town attorney, first the building commissioner, in connection with the prior application, which was for a very similar development, opined that the additional driveway is exactly that, an additional driveway which the applicants can have as a matter of right. It does not fall within the ancillary driveway provision that you, that would otherwise pertain. In other words, where you have used the frontage, the legal access, you are entitled as a matter of right to have an additional driveway. And that determination was made, if you recall, there was a memorandum from the building commissioner to that effect. And there was a second memorandum from town council who confirmed his finding on that particular issue. So therefore, we are not, as we had previously, we're not seeking any special permission for that driveway, as it is allowed as a matter of right. And I know that that's the area of controversy here, or the major area of controversy from the opposition. So let me just suggest this without sounding militant or overly aggressive. But one could have that driveway even if this second dwelling was not there. Even if this is denied, the owners of that property could have a second additional access onto Grassy Pond. And they could put some other accessory building on the site. It could not be residential, but they could put a garage, they could put a barn, they could put some other accessory structure on the site and access it through that driveway. So I stress that, that again, that this driveway is as a matter of right. I also would point out that the lot coverage requirement under this, in this district, is 15%. And, and that's for building coverage. And, and we meet that with the new dwelling. The new dwelling will be, together will have a combined lot coverage of 12.37%. So we're within that 15% requirement. And also, when you take all of these items in combination, the swimming pool, the patios, the driveways for the surface coverage, we're slightly below the maximum, which is 30% lot coverage. I think we're 29-point-something percent. It's shown on, on the details on the plan. This, this plan that we're presenting tonight is a modification of the prior plan. There were some three major areas where there was a modification. One is that the structure is 16% smaller than the previous structure that was proposed. And what's happened is that the structure's been narrowed by two feet on every side. The roof line has been adjusted so that it will be consistent with the existing single-family dwelling, so it won't protrude over what is there right now. The structure has been moved closer to that pavilion central building, so the previous walkway as designed was 15 feet. This will be 10 feet. So it brings it closer to the, to the main dwelling, the pre-existing main dwelling. The, I would also like to present to the board on the issue of lot coverage in this area. I took the, there was actually an exhibit on the opposition letter, which is exhibit number four, where they were trying to illustrate or demonstrate that this lot, namely 86 Mile Street, is significantly larger than all of the other lots in the area. And I, I see that as, as a point in our favor in that this is a lot which is suited, which is ideally suited, if you will, for this type of a, of a special permit, namely where there's a second dwelling on the, on the lot. And I'd like to, if I can, this is something similar to that I had distributed last time. I've taken
Right.
the exhibit, which was their list of lots with, with all of the building lot sizes and so on, which they obtained the information from, I believe, from the assessor's records. So that you can see the comparison here between 86 Miles and the adjoining properties.
Thank you. Thanks.
Thank you.
And so the, as you can see, the, the lots on Grassy Pond are all well undersized. But based on the data, they average 15.45% lot coverage by building. If you look at Mile Street, the average lot coverage on the properties that we examined on, on, they're on that exhibit for Mile Street, you can see that the average coverage is 12.56%, which is below the 15. When we get down to the 86 Mile Street, the very first line that's, that's highlighted shows the total square footage of the two structures at 5,885. And it shows that there would be an 11.45% lot coverage, well below the 15% and well below what we see on Grassy Pond. That number, however, 51,400, that's drawn from the assessor's card, and I don't believe that's the actual number. So that's why I've drawn in what the actual number is, which is the second line. And I left that first line in there so that we're comparing apples to apples, because all of the other numbers come from the assessor's cards. So I left that number in there. But I wanted to be, to point out to you that the real number that we have from our surveyor is 47,565 square feet. And when I take that number and determine lot coverage, we are still below the other structures noted on Mile Street at 12.37% and still well below the lot coverage size on Grassy Pond. And again, I think this is significant because, again, this lot, being the largest in this immediate area, is one that is, in my estimation, ideally suited for this type of an expansion allowed by special permit. And, and that's why I think that that is so significant to your analysis. And that's why I think that that is so significant to your analysis. The other things that I would like to point out is that, and you can see this in the package that we have presented, is that there is very substantial screening that exists along the easterly lot line of this property, which means that this additional unit that will be added on to the, that we propose to add on to the main dwelling, is not going to be, really cannot be seen by any of the immediate neighbors. And the way it's positioned, in terms of its visibility on Mile Street, it's not going to be obtrusive in any way. It's set back. In terms of the rear lot line, the northerly lot line, there is a golf course back there. There's no development at all. There are no residents at all that can be impacted in any way visually or otherwise by this structure. And the other thing I'd like to point out is that there are at least three other properties on Mile Street that consist of two dwelling units. And we obtained this from the assessor's field cards. There's 116 Mile Street, 124 Mile Street, and 134 Mile Street. And each of these, and I have the assessor's cards with me, but if you look at those properties, each of them has a separate cottage of some type, that's a separate dwelling unit from the main house. So to have this kind of use at 86 Miles is not an anomaly in the area. There is precedent for this within the immediate area. Let me go to the, before I address the balance of the special permit provisions, which would be subsection A, I wanted to address, if I could, the memo that was submitted by the opposition back in November, which was a rather lengthy document that they provided to you. And this is a sort of a series of similar arguments that were made when we were here previously on this application. And they are arguing that, and I won't go into this at great length, but they're arguing effectively that, again, they attack the connection of these dwelling units by a series of roofs. And they argue that somehow, these are in fact separate and distinct dwelling units, and that they don't meet the definition of a two-family dwelling within the bylaw. And from that springs the argument that therefore, in order to proceed here, that the applicant would need to obtain a relief by way of a special permit from the zoning board of appeals. That they argue that this would be the extension of a pre-existing non-conforming structure. The last time that I addressed this, I argued that this was not a pre-existing non-conforming structure. They say that it is because of the frontage. We don't have 150 feet of frontage. I think it's something on the order of 122 feet, but we don't have, meet the current frontage. I argued that the current single-family home exists as a matter of right under another section of your bylaw, where the owners were allowed to raise and replace the structure as a matter of right. They did not need any special relief for that. And the structure does not pre-exist current zoning. It conforms to current zoning. It was built under current zoning. Now, the town attorney addressed this question, and I have her memorandum with me this evening. I think it was from June of 2023, and if you don't have it, I have copies over here to provide the board. And the town attorney addressed this question, and she disagreed with me. She said that this is a pre-existing non-conforming structure, but she did not agree that there was any extra relief that was required by way of a special permit. What she opined is that if this permit is allowed tonight, that we, as the applicant, would then be required under section 325-54, it's A1A, to then apply to the building commissioner. And the building commissioner would make a further determination as to whether or not, as a pre-existing non-conforming structure, it could be altered or extended by right. And we would have to meet certain criteria in order for him to determine that we could in fact extend this by right. And those, and I can submit to you that we would meet those criteria. The proposed extension, these are the things he must find. The proposed addition extension will conform to current setbacks, which it does. We meet all of the setbacks under this plan. And coverage for the zoning district in which the existing structure and addition are located, which again, we meet. We meet the lot coverage, we meet setbacks. Number two, he would need to find that the nonconformance concerns the size of the lot in question and/or the frontage. And that is where our issue is, in terms of the frontage. That is the nature of our nonconformity, according to town council, and therefore, we would meet, we would meet that prong of his test. And so I would submit to you that the building commissioner, having met those criteria, would in all likelihood issue the building permit, all other things being equal, unless he finds other problems with the design, or whatever it may be. So it is not necessary to seek any additional relief. They also argue that if in reality, these are two separate structures and not connected by a series of roofs, not a true second-family dwelling, that we would then need to apply for variance. And again, I would say that that isn't true, because again, we meet the definition of a second unit, because it is connected by a series of roofs. And I would go further. In the opinion by town council of June of 2023, she addressed that question, namely, did this application meet that definition? And what she said is that, in my opinion, it appears that if the building commissioner determines that the proposed roof covering the walkway connecting the two dwelling units is a quote "common roof," end quote, or a series of roofs, end quote, the proposed structure will qualify as a two-family dwelling. So in other words, she is saying that this determination is up to the building commissioner, that he makes the call as to whether or not we meet that requirement. And I would suggest to you that the building commissioner has implicitly ruled on that, because one of the memos that should be in your package is a memo from the building commissioner dated November 20 of 2023, in which he states, "I have reviewed the current adjusted application for the change to a two-family use at 86 Mile Street. I believe that this application qualifies under section 325-51N to be considered for a special permit." So I would submit to you that he has examined the question of the interconnectivity of these roofs, that he has implicitly determined that we meet that definition, and that this is a valid proposal for a second unit on the site. And therefore, these arguments about this being an unlawful extension, or this being something that requires a variance, would not be of any validity, given the finding by the building commissioner, that this in fact meets the definition as to a second-family unit. In addition to finding that there is compliance with subsection N, the planning board is required to go back to an earlier section in the bylaw that applies to all provisions, all applications for special permits, which is section 325-51A, conditions of approval. And so that states that the planning board shall not approve any application for a special permit, except a special permit for a site plan, which this is not, unless it finds that in its judgment, all of the following conditions are met. And the first of those is A, which is that the use, the use as developed will not adversely affect the neighborhood. Now, in thinking about number A, the way I interpret that is, is that in that prong, the board examines whether or not the use, not the activity, not the layout, not the design, but whether the use, namely the category of use, will adversely affect the neighborhood. And that is probably intended for a situation where there's an expansion of a pre-existing non-conforming use, such as a commercial use within a residential district. And then for the determination would be, that particular use as developed would be adverse, or may be adverse, to the neighborhood. In point of fact, in the bylaw, there is a definition of use, albeit it says use, comma, principal, but it gives some guidance as to the meaning of the word "use" as used in subsection A. And it says, the definition is, "The main or primary purpose for which a structure or lot is designed, arranged, or intended, or for which it may be used, occupied, or maintained under this bylaw." The main or primary purpose, so what is the purpose of the use? And the purpose is, as a two-family dwelling. So I would submit that the question and prong A is narrow, namely, is the two-family dwelling use, and that use in and of itself, an adverse effect on the neighborhood? And I would suggest to you that it is not. It is a residential use. It is anticipated by the bylaw that in this particular district, in fact, in all districts that, to which it applies, a second unit can in fact be developed and built. So I would submit that we would meet prong A. B is, the specific site is an appropriate location for such a use, structure, or condition. And as I've argued, given the size of this lot, we are in excess of what the minimum is that is required. Given the layout of these structures and the screening of the new structure in particular, I would say that the site is an appropriate location for this particular use. Number C, or item C, this is the one I think that brings in the opposition from the Grassy Pond neighborhood, and this is that you must find that there will be no nuisance or serious hazard to vehicles or pedestrians. And I see those as two different concepts. A nuisance is a use or activity on your land which adversely affects the use and enjoyment of a neighboring land. So the operation of a waste wood processing center, for example, that creates smoke, dust, noise, odor, would be an example of something that's a nuisance. So in this case, I would say that this is a residential use. It's not a commercial use. This is not going to be a motel, a hotel, it's not going to be a restaurant. The character of the use is going to remain the same, namely residential, and it's the intention of these applicants that it will be for family use. And therefore, I suggest that there is no nuisance at all in this proposed plan. The next question is the one that's really raised by all of the, most of the letters, all of the letters in opposition, and that is, there's an allegation here that the introduction of the additional vehicles from this project will create a hazardous condition for pedestrians and vehicles on Grassy Pond Road. I submit that there is no hazard, or that there will be no hazard, and I certainly would submit that there would be no serious hazard to vehicles or pedestrians. Number one, Grassy Pond Road is a public way. There are 17 homes on Grassy Pond Road that I've counted up from there, exhibit four. If I, if I guess that, intelligently guess that there are approximately two vehicles per residence, which is typical today, that's 34 vehicles on Grassy Pond Road. The only number of vehicles that are going to be added by this driveway that leads out onto Grassy Pond Road are going to be two, at most, possibly only one. But let's say it's going to be two. That's less than, it actually comes out to be 0.05% increase in the number of vehicles on Grassy Pond Road. It's insignificant. There will be the occasional service vehicle, there's no question about that, but every other house on Grassy Pond Road has service vehicles. Other homes on Grassy Pond Road have landscapers that service their properties. I assume that there are deliveries every day by Amazon Prime or by FedEx. I don't even know that there will be deliveries at this particular driveway. They'll probably go to 86 Miles, they'll go to the front driveway if they're making a delivery. So the impact of, at most, two residential vehicles on Grassy Pond Road, I would suggest to you, is really minimal. And I've read the letters, you've read the letters, we've heard the opposition about there are people that walk on Grassy Pond, there are children on Grassy Pond. There was a letter, I think, at one point, that stated that there were X number of children, and I think named them all. And I'm not making light of the opposition, but I find it hard to imagine that, once this is constructed, and it is a residential structure, that this is going to make all the difference in the world to this public way. If this was a commercial development, and there were delivery trucks that were coming in and out, so on and so forth, I think that argument would have a lot of weight to it. And I would just submit to you that this does not create a serious hazard, my mind no hazard, but not a serious hazard to vehicles or pedestrians. And so I would submit that we would meet the conditions of approval in this particular application. I wanted to address one other thing, and that is that they talked about, the letter from council, talked about the measurement of the driveway, that there had to be separation of the driveway. And I went over that with our surveyor, Thad Eldridge, and he could certainly explain it to you. But the bylaw requires that the distances be established along the street lines, and it's not just a matter of the separation between the driveways. And when we measure that along the street lines, that is to say, the driveway that comes out from the immediate butter, and the proposed driveway from Grassy Pond, you get slightly over 20 feet of separation, in which you measure along one street line and then along the other street line. And that's the proper method of measurement. And I would also say that if there is a breach or a violation there, that that again is a call for the building commissioner when a building permit application is submitted. The second thing I want to point out is that we submitted tonight, in your package, a more detailed plan of how we intend to deal with drainage on that driveway. This was one of the criticisms from the immediate butter, that the water would run off onto his property and onto his driveway. And the plan that we presented shows that we are going to install, the applicant's going to install a catch basin on-site. He's designed the driveway so that there's a low point, so that the water is going to be collected on his property, and is going to be handled by a catch basin that is shown on the plan, and that will be installed as shown on the plan. And so I would submit that we have addressed that objection in terms of the drainage question. It should be in a supplemental plan that was, I believe, was submitted today. I don't know whether you've seen it, but... So we have addressed that particular criticism. So with that, Mr. Michelle, Mr. Eldridge, myself, we're obviously available to respond to any questions, but I would respectfully request that you act favorably on the application. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sadler. Let's hear from the town.
Okay. Thank you. The applicant is George and Karen Olivera, Oliver Homes LLC. The applicants are proposing to construct a second dwelling as a two-family dwelling connected by a cover roof walkway to the existing house. The proposed second dwelling is approximately 2,766 square feet. Residential dwelling with three bedrooms, three and a half bathrooms, and an attached garage. The lot area is 1.18 acres, which equals roughly to 47,565 square feet. which equals roughly to 47,565 square feet. The case is returned to the planning board by the owners of 86 Mile Street for a two-family use special permit after their initial case was brought forward back in 2023. The applicants withdrew without prejudice after numerous meetings. The currently submitted plan has adjusted the size and the location of the second structure. The applicants have applied for a use special permit pursuant to the Code of Town of Harwich, Sections 325, 51, special permit, and Sections 325, 51, N, two-family dwelling. For a project review, the applicants have submitted the plans on October 24th, 2023, for a special permit application. The public hearing was noticed in the Cape Cod Chronicle on November 9th, as well as November 16th of 2023. Copies of the application package were sent to the following departments to invite comments on the project. Outside of the building commissioner, the Board of Health, and the town council, none of the other town departments had any concerns with the project. The hearing date for the project was opened on November 28th, 2023, and continued on to tonight, January 9th, 2024. The applicants again are seeking a use permit, use special permit in accordance with the requirements of the zoning bylaws, 325, Section 51, Section N, two-family dwelling. I should clarify, the following were opinions from the building commissioner and town council who addressed the three primary issues with the project. The property contains 47,565 square feet, although the frontage is only 127.66 feet. The zoning requirement requires 150 feet of frontage in front of the property. And I can, I'll highlight that in a minute. Additional access to an abutting public road would be allowed as a matter of right. The proposed application has an additional access to Grassy Pond Road. The proposed roof covering for the walkway connects the two dwelling units is a common roof or a series of roofs. The proposed structure does qualify as a two-family dwelling unit. After reviewing the proposed special permit application for a two-family dwelling unit, the application meets the criteria in the Harwich zoning, Section 325, 51, N, two-family dwelling. And the town council also did explain that if there are any other differences in terms of lot coverage and setbacks, that would be determined by the building commissioner. And because this is a non-conforming lot, the building commissioner has the discretion to issue the building permit in accordance to either Sections 325, 54A, 1A, and C, as well as 325, 54A, 2.
Very good, thank you. Any questions from the board? Mary.
Just to clarify, so their building, their town council has said that the building commissioner can make that determination based on the addition that's being built, correct?
Correct.
So it's really not dealing with the existing frontage or the non-conformity on Mile Street? It's dealing with everything that's going to be added because it's a pre-existing non-conforming use?
Yes, and the zoning allows, mentions the non-conformity, and the building commissioner still has the discretion to issue the permit. And I forgot, as part of the PowerPoint presentation, this is the town of Harwich. The project is located in Harwichport. And you can see the red dot, which is 86 Mile Street, right there. And the property in question is right where the dot is, so it's just over an acre of land. The frontage right here is 127 feet, without the, not meeting 150 as required by the zoning. And the additional access to Grassy Pond Road is right here.
So again, through you, so based on opinions of council that you've received, they're entitled as a matter of right to put that driveway, to have that driveway on Grassy Pond?
That's correct.
So regardless of whether this application continues or is approved or not approved, they could still put a driveway?
Correct.
And still have access to that property?
Yes.
Through that? Okay, thank you.
Looks like you already have a functioning access, right? Any other questions from the board?
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Mary.
Technical question. You gave us this lot information handout, and there's a column for living space. And then at the very end, there's a lot coverage column, and you didn't compute it or calculate it for each of the lots, only for them as a group. So is lot coverage, is that calculation for, arrived at just by considering living space? Or is it arrived at by everything that covers the lot, like a swimming pool, a gazebo, driveway?
No, this is just, this would be, this is my read on the exhibit is that living space.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions from the board at this point? Yes, please.
I just have a question on the amendment. I'm sorry that the applicant had to feel that they had to verify that their granddaughter was handicapped. But on that point, when I'm looking at this new proposed structure, I see, I don't see a handicap basin. I see steps up on multiple elevations.
Well, there's a second floor. When you say steps up, you mean up to the second floor?
Well, the assumption would be that the first floor is where the handicap accessible thing. So my question is, how does she, how does the wheelchair get in the house?
Well, it'll be designed so it has a zero clearance threshold. It'll be no threshold.
On all of the, so right now, they have step ups, but they're going to change the outside thresholds?
Are you talking about the existing house or the new house?
This is the new house?
Okay, yes.
These elevations, and I'm looking for, the zero coverage was at the garage, but then there were steps almost every place else I looked.
That's just the rendering of the guy who put the house plan together. But it's not the, the intention is that it will be, to get in and out of the house.
Right.
To get in and out of the house. It'll be a zero clearance, so there'll be deck on the outside of the doorway, and floor on the inside. It'll be a zero clearance threshold to get through the doorway.
So it just wasn't shown on this? It's the intention?
Right.
Okay. Because it's very detailed inside, on the clearance of the doors and things like that?
Yep.
So it just brought to my attention, then the outside, there wasn't zero clearance?
Yes.
Okay, so that's, that was my only question.
And then that 10-foot covered roof section between the new house and the gazebo and the pavilion will be a handicap ramp that will be designed so that it'll be at the necessary pitch for a handicap person to utilize it to get in and out of the house.
For the set of double doors.
I mean, the exact elevation, no, I don't have them right down to the, to how we're going to be, but the house will be not out of the ground like a wall. It won't be out as much because of the elevations that we want to achieve to make the house accessible 100% by handicap. If they were outside by the pavilion, and they wanted to get inside to use the handicap brush, they're going to have a way of getting right into the house and use the necessary, whatever it's called, kitchen, whatever.
Right, it's just that, it was the difference between the inside and the outside. The inside was very detailed and the outside wasn't. So I just, that was, that was a series of my questions.
Any further questions? So at this point, we'll open it up to the public. I would like to, before we do so, acknowledge that on this project or for this hearing, we received 14 letters from Abutters, John and Ellen Connolly, Paul and Mary Ellen Cummings, David DiNofio, Kathleen Hagan, Elizabeth and Edward Johnson, John and Paula McCarthy, Peter Moynah, Catherine O'Leary, Michael Sheehan, Thomas and Mary Ann Simpson, Patty Smith, Elizabeth and Dan Sitzma, Sean and Deirdre Tobin, and Alan Witty. Sincerely, we truly appreciate that. This is the way this system is supposed to work, and that input is invaluable. I would invite anybody who wishes to make a further extension of the statements made in those letters or address particular parts of Attorney Sabat's arguments tonight about viability, to please step up to the podium, give us your name and address, and we're entirely interested to hear from you. Sir?
Can I ask one question, point of order?
Yes.
I'm looking at the plot plan here, and it looks like, isn't a butter, you said there are 14 Abutters. I see two. So is the definition, for our purposes, of an abutter, someone that just lives nearby? Or is it someone that actually abuts, their property abuts the property of the claimant?
I think it depends on the zone, right? In a commercial zone, it kind of, it's very expansive.
No, it depends, it depends on what the zoning bylaws is.
Yes, that's correct.
I believe it's 500. I don't remember whether it's 350 or 500.
500 feet, yeah.
It's either 500 or 300 feet that we normally send out the Abutters list to, for a public hearing process. And so I can clarify that question.
Okay.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much. My name is Christopher Senney. I live in Brewster and have a small law practice there that specializes in land use. I represent four property owners on Grassy Pond. These are Kathleen Hagan, Thomas Simpson, Patty Smith, and Catherine Pendigress. They live at 37, 41, 10, and 4, Grassy Pond Road. My clients oppose this application. My associate, Victoria Damos, has submitted a memo to your file on November 21st. I'm not going to repeat the argument she made there. Counsel for the applicant has made reference to some of those arguments. I'll make a few points there, but then address the board with regard to what I think is the main issue here. In Victoria's memo, she did talk about the fact that this is not a conforming lot in terms of road frontage. If it was, there would be no question about whether a trip to the Zoning Board of Appeals is appropriate or not. But in a case where you do not have conforming lot frontage, you may need to go to the Zoning Board of Appeals in addition to getting a special permit to convert a single-family home to a two-family home under 51 N. And that happens when what you are doing or proposing is not simply an alteration, reconstruction, extension, or structural change to a single-family home. That's not what's happening here. It's more than that. Even if it was what it purports to be, which is the conversion of a single-family home to a two-family home, that's more than an alteration, reconstruction, extension, or structural change. So when you do something more than add a den or a dormer or expand your home, you often must go to the Zoning Board of Appeals to get what is known as a Section 6 finding that comes from our zoning statute, that the proposed expansion is not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood. We believe a trip to the Zoning Board of Appeals is going to be in order here because we do not think this is simply an alteration of a single-family home. In terms of the access, I agree. The applicant has a common law right embedded in their deed to access Grassy Pond because their road abuts Grassy Pond. There's a layer that lies above title rights in your deed, and that is the regulatory function. Boards like yours that would look at a driveway proposal, and a driveway still has to meet certain safety standards. And I agree, this house as it stands today has a right, as the town council has said, to have an additional driveway if it can satisfy all regulatory agencies and officers that it's a safe driveway. That is not what's happening here. We have a second dwelling being built. I'm going to argue in a moment that it's not part of a conversion to a two-family home. It's a separate, single-family dwelling. And the driveway for that dwelling is only going out to Grassy Pond, whereas the driveway for the existing house is only going out to Miles Street. There is no connection. You can't go from the main house, the existing house, out to Grassy Pond or vice versa. So it is very clear that the idea behind this extra access way is to be the primary access for the new structure. In terms of the second driveway, you have Section 325-42H, which talks about certain safety measures. As this new driveway, which again, was built when the applicant wanted temporary permission to access from Grassy Pond to build the pool. Everyone thought this was going to be temporary. Many trees were removed and bushes, and it created a drainage problem. But that driveway, as it meets with the neighbor's driveway, they almost collide at the point that they intersect with Grassy Pond Road. Your regulation allows you, in the context of a special permit, to consider, your regulation reads, in approving a special permit, the Board of Appeals or Planning Board may attach such conditions and safeguards as are deemed necessary to protect the public and the neighborhood in the following respects. And one is the regulation of number, design, and location of access drives and other traffic features. So you've heard testimony that the town attorney has signed off on that rear access way, that additional access way. But that doesn't remove from you the obligation or opportunity to look at the safety factor here. And when you see this proposed project the way I see it, and the way my clients see it, as a second, single-family dwelling on a single building lot with a dedicated access way out to Grassy Pond Road, that is not simply an additional access that's possible because you abut a public way. So those are the points we've already argued in my memo. And again, with town council, we agree on some points. We disagree on some points. And I don't want to turn this into a legal briefing where you would have to try to figure this out. You're going to follow the guidance of your attorney, and I am not your attorney, Amy Questle is. So I'm going to set that aside. It's in your file. It's a long memo. And we have articulated the basis of our concerns with regard to all of these issues, which I think are not the main point. The main point starts with one photograph. This photograph is in the record. It was submitted by the applicant as part of the application. This photograph is a rendering of the existing house, a swimming pool, someone about to dive into the pool. You've got a cabana or a pavilion structure that has some grilling equipment, and you have the new structure off to the left. You can see that you, you can see right through this, and where they connect, you have just a little roofway. And on the other side of the pavilion, there's another similar roofway. To me, this is two, single-family homes. The new home is 2,700 square feet. I raised three kids in a home of 2,400 square feet. This is a big, single-family home. I know that it has been described to you that this is for a particular purpose, which is quite worthy. But it is also possible to meet the requirements of this family member by building a true two-family home, which could be built and still honor the setbacks right next to the existing building, fronting on Miles Street and access from Miles Street. You could build a two-family home. You could convert the existing, single-family home into a real, two-family home if you just put it together, which is what's really meant in your bylaw, and I'll go over those provisions. Now, instead, this is two separate, large, single-family homes on one lot, which is a violation of 325-18, which says one residence per lot, and accessing it completely separately. So we start with the section that this application comes to you within, which is 325-51N. That allows for two-family dwellings. Special permits for two-family dwellings may be granted upon a determination by the planning board that the following additional criteria are met. But before we even go to the criteria, we see that this relates to a two-family dwelling, and that is a defined term. and that is a defined term in your zoning bylaws. So we look at that definition. And that definition begins with two words that are central to this whole case. You can forget about all the legal memorandum, and look at two words that begin the definition of what a two-family dwelling is. A building containing two dwelling units. This is not a building. This is two buildings with two separate foundations, 40 feet apart, not connected in any way, except that a walkway is planned to go from the existing home to the cabana, to the pavilion, and then another walkway is designed to go to the new home, and it will have a roof over it. That's not what's meant by this section of the zoning bylaw. What is supposed to be allowed in every residential zone in town, as long as the lot has 40,000 square feet or more, is the ability to appear before you and ask for permission to convert a single-family home to a two-family home. That is a marvelous zoning bylaw. I wish more towns had that. You are bold, because what you're really saying is, we don't mind doubling up on density here, as long as it's really a two-family home. Not two, single-family homes that are connected by a walkway that will be covered in order to create this series of roofs, which is not what is meant. The definition mentions "structure." Structure is also defined under 325-2. A structure is a combination of materials, whether portable or fixed, having a roof or similar covering to form a structure for the shelter of persons, animals, or property. What we have here is something that could come to be the subject of many applications before your board. I live on 1.39 acres in Brewster. I don't happen to live in your town. Our town doesn't have a conversion to a duplex bylaw, as you do. But if it did, and if the Brewster Planning Board approved this project, I know what would happen. My wife would say to me, hey, honey, I'd like a second, full, single-family home on our property. Let's apply for this, and we'll just have a walkway that connects somewhere, put a roof above that walkway. And you could find that in the future, if you approve this, which is not a building, it's two buildings, you could receive many more applications to do this on many lots in town, which is not what this bylaw is intended to do. This is supposed to be a building. When it talks about connected by a series of roofs, that's the two dwelling units that are part of a building. So certainly, if it's part of a building, there are going to be parts of roof that are going to be connected and covered. What's shown on this plan, with these walkways that happen to be covered, is not what's intended here. I understand. I have a copy of the building commissioner's letter. It says, "I have reviewed the current adjusted application for the change to a two-family use at 86 Miles." I believe that this application qualifies under Section 325-51N to be considered for a special permit. Now, if no special permit was required, if your bylaw just allowed any residential lot of 40,000 square feet or more to be approved for a two-family home, it would be the building commissioner's call on whether this project you have before you is a two-family home. But a special permit is required, which is why we're here tonight. And when we are, when you are deliberating on this application, you have to begin at the very beginning, which is, is this a two-family dwelling? That in turn is based on the definition of two-family dwelling, which says, "a building." So you shouldn't defer the question of whether or not this is a two-family dwelling to the building commissioner. You must take upon yourselves now, in executing your function under 325-51N, make a finding on that point. You should do that. You should make a finding. And if you can't honestly find that this is a single structure that fits within our definition of a two-family home, you should deny this application, because my concern is that you're going to be looking at many more applications to do exactly this on many home sites in town, where all one needs to do is propose a covered walkway. And then you have a problem, because once you approve this, when you receive four or five more, and you say, oh, no, no, wait a minute, we shouldn't have approved this, and you deny one, that applicant will appeal to the court and will say, well, this is arbitrary and capricious. You approved it once over here, and now you've denied me. So some careful thought has to go into whether or not you are ready to say that just having a walkway between two, large, single-family homes is okay with us. We're going to call that a two-family home. And that's what this applicant is asking you to do. You do allow accessory dwelling units, which again, I applaud the town of Harwich. You do both things I think more towns should do. You allow two-family homes in certain circumstances, true two-family homes, and you allow accessory dwelling units. And that is a way of increasing density, which is important in our communities, because we all upzoned our towns from the '60s and '70s and '80s until we have these very large lots. We should increase density, but you are not the town meeting. Town meeting could change the zoning bylaws to say, yes, we want two, large, single-family homes on any dwelling lot. That's not what the bylaws say, and it's not your job to do that. And you have to be careful not to effectively do that as you rule on this special permit application. So I think the applicant can accomplish the goal if they do what we thought they would do when they first withdrew without prejudice, which is to go back, relook at this project oriented to Miles Street, which is where access should be coming in, and make it honestly and really a two-family home. And I urge you to look deep into this, and I urge you to make your own decision, because you must, as part of this special permit process, is this a two-family home? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Senney. Anybody else from the public who wish to stand up? Please do so. Give us your name and your address.
My name is Kathleen Hagan. Thank you for letting me speak. I will not reiterate issues that I listed in a November 12th letter to you. I think you had asked, would we explore on other things and not just restate our letters? Really have only one central point to make that I don't think has been made or made clearly enough, and I'll explain. I'm the owner of 37 Grassy Pond Road, which faces directly across from 38 Grassy Pond Road, and diagonally across from the rear of the 86 Miles Street parcel. You may have assumed, from the objections of 25 abutters to Oliver Homes' proposed residential complex, that our complaints are all prospective regarding negative impacts that would happen if a large, second dwelling and rear driveway cut through to Grassy Pond Road were both approved. Our objections about negative impacts to this real estate project, as currently proposed, are much more than prospective. They are immediate. In the last almost two years, Grassy Pond Road, Miles Street neighborhood has already experienced harm from both the permitting process and from the construction of a rear access roadway onto Grassy Pond Road from Miles Street, and in four specific ways. Some background. From 2015 to 2021, the primary dwelling at 86 Miles Street appeared virtually uninhabited. There was hardly any activity at the new house, with the exception of occasional renter, and at the end of the summer, for a week or two, autos with Wisconsin license plates would be seen in the driveway. The property appeared to be a spec house. It was very well-maintained, and no bother to the neighborhood. Regular visits from service company trucks and landscaping trucks with large trailers had no problem driving in from Miles Street into the large parking area and driveway on the property's legal frontage, and then easily turning around in the large circular driveway to drive back out safely onto Miles Street. That all changed in 2022. In the spring of 2022, like a low-flying goose coming swooping out of the marshes from nowhere, a fully excavated roadway appeared, cutting through to Grassy Pond Road, physically conjoined at the end with a driveway of 38 Grassy Pond Road. No public notice, no hearing, no review of access taken from an easement across an adjacent property. So in February 2022, the first harm happened when all the abutters to 86 Miles Street were deprived of their right to public notice and to raise objections, or this roadway might never have been constructed. And I might add, they may have a legal standing as an abutter for a right-of-way, but it requires approval from a board like the Planning Board to make sure that there's no negative impact. So it's not automatic to have a right-of-way. At least, in my mind. You can correct me when I'm done, if that's not correct. In March of 2023, the Highway Department Director, Lincoln Hooper, acknowledged to me on the phone that the permit issued in February 22 was issued in error. He said, I quote, "It was a mistake," that he and the department's roadway manager were told by the applicant that the rear access was requested temporarily and as an alternative access only for large trucks to access the backyard for pool construction. The fact that the building commissioner now, in 2023, in the context of the second dwelling proposal, has no problem with a, quote, "additional roadway," does not retrospectively negate the fact that this roadway was presented in 2022 as an alternative and temporary roadway, and was subject to Harwich bylaw S325-18, requiring a special permit. If the board should decline the application for the second dwelling, it must still independently address the unresolved issue of a rear roadway authorization, one way or another. Otherwise, Oliver Homes will be allowed by the town, for a second time, to sidestep the permitting approval process for a rear access roadway. The board should decide on the roadway issue as it sees fit. We, the abutters, are asking that you not remain silent on the driveway issue. With all due respect, to do so would be to sidestep the board's responsibility to determine what is a fair application of zoning requirements to protect neighborhoods like ours. The second harm has been physical damage to the adjacent property at 38 Grassy Pond Road. Serious disturbance of vegetation has caused water runoff problems, creating flooding to 38 Grassy Pond Road's attached garage when it rains, and heavy root disturbance to a large oak tree next to the driveway at 38 Miles Street. In the 48 years that I have owned 37 Grassy Pond Road, I have never seen any pools of water at the end of the driveway at 38 Miles Street after rainstorms. Now, the retired schoolteacher, who owns this property, has to contend with the high likelihood of mold developing in his house from excessive water and moisture. A licensed arborist has assessed the large tree as damaged, and very likely to fail at some point, and could either fall on his car or house, or need to be taken down. This tree has provided a canopy of shade for the owner's driveway and side yard for many years. This just isn't right, and the amount of drainage problem is not going to be solved by a little catch pace. The conditions of even the permit that was issued in February 22 have been, clearly been violated. Thirdly, the additional traffic and parking related to the rear access has created a disturbance in this neighborhood. For the past 21 months, Oliver Homes After Pool Construction has continued to use the rear access actively as a service entrance, trying to make it a functioning roadway, with contractors, trucks, vans, and landscaping trucks barreling into Grassy Pond at higher speed than resident drivers drive, driving directly into the rear of 86 Miles Street, and later backing out directly onto Grassy Pond Road, right at the 90-degree bend in the road where there is a blind spot. Here's the blind spot. I'll leave these later. I think you may have seen these in some of the documentation, but this is the blind spot. Whether you're backing out or driving out, you can't see who's coming down here. And the children, or adults, or joggers coming down here can't see who's behind the trees. It's a blind spot. There's no line of sight. Even when you are driving out directly and not backing out, you have a very limited line of sight. Also, I don't know where the 20 feet came from, but this is what two conjoined driveways look like, when two cars are trying to back out on the conjoined driveways. So this is 38 Miles Street, Grassy Pond Road. This is 86 Miles Street. If two cars are backing out at the same time, imagine this at night, and there's no streetlight there. That is an accident waiting to happen. Furthermore, you can see behind them, because this, right behind this car, behind this car, is the bend in the 90-degree bend in the road. You can see behind them, there's my property. There's hardly any clearance there. So that's one of the reasons it's a problem, having to be able to back into the road so you can come out more safely. So they drive into the road, and they back out. And this is not, I don't know where the 20 feet came from, but this is what a conjoined driveway looks like, when two cars are trying to back out at the same time. This is not superior frontage, as far as I'm concerned. If that's going to be their front, that's not superior frontage. Also, trucks and vehicles have been parked at the 90-degree angle in the road, until the former planning director told them they couldn't park there any longer. This is dangerous. This is right at the 90-degree angle of the road. Who can we call in the future, when there are pool parties, graduations, and other gatherings at 86 Miles Street for this owner or future owners with guests parking along Grassy Pond Road? We know for a fact that the Olivers intend to add two more bedrooms above the garage, which would make the proposed second dwelling a five-bedroom house. 86 Miles Street would then become a very large, nine-bedroom residential complex. Fourth, and importantly, safety issues have been created, in addition to the ones I pointed of the cars backing out, adjacent to one another. Fourth and importantly, safety issues have been created by this increased traffic to Grassy Pond Road. This is especially so at the bend in the road where the current rear access road is situated, and along the golf course perimeter, because of the type, number, and speed of vehicles. As mentioned, because there's not sufficient clearance for larger vehicles to turn around and back in, there is no clear line of sight. I cannot say with certainty whether there'll be an accident there involving vehicles, or worse, an injury to a pedestrian, a jogger, bike rider, or child. But I can say with absolute certainty that the presence of that potential danger, even without the intensification of use that would most certainly be created by a second dwelling facing onto Grassy Pond Road, has already diminished the tranquility of the very quiet cul-de-sac, and created legitimate safety concerns, especially for the many young children who populate the Grassy Pond, Miles Street neighborhood from May to October. I refer you to the previously submitted census of 33 children, 24 of whom are under the age of six, who delight in the relative freedom of playing, running, and riding the tricycles, bicycles, and scooters around the circle, and especially in the backside along the golf course, which is the most protected area of the cul-de-sac. Now I see mothers and minders standing at the end of the driveway, the rear roadway, almost acting like crossing guards, because they're concerned about people coming out and going in, and the little kids, well, really little kids with their minders, but then the older kids are still kids, and they're too free-range, and they used to be able to play in that area. So that's a big problem. I respect George Oliver's right to the private enjoyment of his property, and the right to improve it, if he seeks to make it comfortable as a family compound. He also has a right to improve it as a real estate asset, and then sell it if he so chooses, just as he has done in recent years with a number of other properties in Harwichport. Whether he plans to summer or retire at 86 Miles Street with his family, or attempts to subdivide the parcel or convert the property into a two-unit condominium complex, should not really be any of my business. But what is very much our, the abutters' business, and the Planning Board's responsibility overseas, is the fact that with rights come responsibilities. To abide by town bylaws and do no harm to any abutter or negatively impact neighborhood -- to abide by town bylaws and do no harm to any abutter or negatively impact neighborhoods. Lastly, I'm in no way suggesting that the planning board should deny a permit for the roadway just because the process was unfair and abused. Although the town of Harwich should not tolerate willful noncompliance, say nothing of rewarded, what I am saying is that harm has already been done. The negative impacts the abutters would have warned about prospectively in February two thousand twenty-two have already started to happen and will only get much worse in the future if a second dwelling as currently proposed is approved and in any case if the temporary rear access road is not removed. It wasn't intended as a functioning roadway. It was intended to let trucks in to build a pool. Grassy Pond, the Grassy Pond abutters seek only to preserve, to protect the safe environment and preserve the quiet enjoyment of our neighborhood. We appreciate that the board has listened to our objective, objections and are putting our trust in the planning board to protect our rights and prevent further harm. I request that you deny the Oliver Homes LLC dwelling plan as currently proposed and any permit of any kind for a rear access roadway. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, Ms. Hagan. Thank you very much.
Thank you for listening to us.
Anybody else from the public wish to address the board?
Good evening. Can you hear me? Yes?
Yes.
My name's Kater Pendergast. My husband, Ed, and I, along with our family, live at four Grassy Pond Road and have been there for thirty years. I've attended all the sessions regarding the Oliver Homes proposal for the construction of a second dwelling at eighty-six Mile Street and their request to have a new driveway off Grassy Pond Road be, be approved permanently. I must say, and I'm going to try not to repeat what others said, so it's going to be a little bit garbled, but bear with me. I must say it's been frustrating to attend the hearings and not hear discussion by the board of its review of the critical requirements for, under section three twenty-five fifty-one, which the planning board, previous planning and development director strongly encouraged the planning board to keep, keep in mind and review, having to do with hazards and safety associated with the driveway. The driveway has been of major concern to us for, for those reasons in our community, as well as the fact that the proposed dwelling is of such scale and size that is out of, out of sync with the neighborhood that we live in of small, modest Cape homes. Many of the neighbors have spoken a great deal about the significant hazards and adverse safety, safety issues at the location of the, with the location of the driveway. It just is what it is. It happens to be at that sharp bend in the road and the clear potential for, for accidents. The truth is that trucks go in there now all the time, and because of the, the way it's structured, they have to back out, making it just worse, but extremely dangerous. And I, I'm not, I'm not sure I left these with you before, but I brought my own pictures, which are, which just show you that no matter what you do, you come out of Alan Witty's house, and you're, somebody's coming out of that driveway, so one of those big trucks, they're driving right into you. So the, the safety issues there, and the safety issues of people walking around, it's a quiet, small, little neighborhood, are just, are just substantial. It does seem that the Oliver Homes proposal really minimizes the hazard issue and, you know, leaves the neighborhood feeling that, in fact, those hazards aren't real. And I was happy to hear Attorney Senni focused a great deal on the obligations of this board to address the issues of hazards and safety. There may be a right to a driveway, but it has to be in, be able to occur in a safe environment and without hazards. I do strongly encourage you to encourage the Oliver Homes team to think again about the prospect of a proposal that could effectively meet the needs of this family and be oriented to Mile Street. In previous sessions, it's been clear that that was possible, that was workable, that was something that could be satisfactory in terms of space, et cetera. And I, and it certainly would resolve the clearly biggest issue that we and the neighbors have. So at the end of the day, I, I have to say that I strongly encourage this board not to approve this proposed plan as it now stands and to deny the Oliver Homes proposal. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Pendergast. Anybody else from the public wish to address the board? Please do so by sending up to the podium and bringing us your name and address.
Hello, good evening. My name's William McDonald. We reside at twenty-six Grassy Pond Road. I guess the first question I would ask is what exactly are we doing here tonight? We went through all sorts of hearings and meetings, and developers of this potential application were supposed to go and redo the plan. But in essence, the plan hasn't changed. There is no, the plan is exactly the same as it was minus two feet. And that's absurd. That's an insult to the neighbors. It's an insult to you folks. I agree with what Attorney Senni said. If they want to make a two-family structure by building on the structure that they have now, that would be fine. It's just the wrong development, and I'll call it a development. It's almost like a mini tourist area. I mean, it's, it's, we're talking about two large houses. We're talking about a commercial-sized swimming pool, outdoor playground, outdoor kitchen, a simmer. It's ridiculous for a tiny little neighborhood like Grassy Pond, which is made up largely of ranch houses, some a little more than a thousand square feet. I would ask you to vote it down. I see no sense for it, to be honest. I think the attorney was correct when he said there's other ways of proceeding. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McDonald. Anybody else wish to address the, please?
Can we have some people online, maybe?
Okay.
Ed Johnson sits Grassy Pond Road. About seven, eight years ago, my wife was behind me. We had two-bedroom ranch at Sits Grassy Pond Road, which we tore down and put a three-bedroom in, on an antique cape. And we played by the rules. We were forced to put a knee wall in our basement. We don't have a full basement. Just because the, yeah, the septic system was so close to the house, we played by the rules. I'm asking this board, give us relief. We have two young nephews that love riding their bicycles, four and seven years old, very aggressive riding their bicycles around the street. And we do have people in the summertime that drive very fast in there. We have delivery people who drive very fast in there. The newspaper person drives very fast in there early in the morning. We, no sidewalks. It's very dangerous. Please listen to us. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Is there people online who we need to hear from, Caleb? Who can signal, or?
No, if anybody wants to speak, they can unmute themselves.
Right. I only see a couple of people that are unmuted, and so...
It's Tom Simpson, I think, who wants to speak.
But is this a?
Yeah, it is.
It is a hybrid meeting?
Wait, yeah, I think it is.
And it says, any interest in any portion or specific item on the addendum should plan for it in person.
That's how I, I read it the way Ellen does, but I'll differ.
I thought, I thought that ship has sailed, but...
I just thought I had to.
Okay, that's just a pause.
I don't think anybody's spoken anyway.
There's three people who just unmuted.
Well, since we're here, let's just see if we've got anything. Does anybody on, online like to add anything briefly? Okay.
Is the audio even?
I...
Can they hear you?
I think, right.
Do you have the audio as well?
They would have messaged that they couldn't hear us.
I can say no, how to.
Right, again, this is not a hybrid meeting. So the people that were, it says explicitly, so this is kind of a favor to those. So, you know, we've been going for, let's see, a hundred minutes on this hearing, and we've had a lot of patience for you all to get to this point. So the point of the matter is, is that I think we'll just continue on with what we've got going on in the room. Is there anybody further from the public who would like to address the board? Okay. What's the wish of the board, the will of the board at this point?
Well, I think I'm, I'm happy to make some comments if, if we're up to start deliberating.
Okay. Do you think we're at that point?
I think so.
I think we have some really solid input. We have a lot of history with this property. We've had a very clear exposition of two opposing interpretations. Hats off to both councils. Mr. Sabbath?
Yes, I just wanted to respond. I noticed you, you've been going a while. Be very brief. I want to respond to one point.
Yes, please.
On the dwelling unit. I'll, I'll make it very fast. Again, I believe that the town council opined that the determination is made by the building commissioner. But to the extent that you feel that you would deliberate on that, the definition of a two-family dwelling, it doesn't stop at the phrase of building containing. It, it is a building containing two dwelling units, whether side by side, over each other, or in any other combination, provided that there is a common roof or series of roofs connecting the dwelling units, plural. And a dwelling unit is defined as a building or portion thereof consisting of one or more rooms, et cetera. So in other words, a dwelling unit can be a building. And finally, a building is a combination of any materials, whether portable or fixed, having a roof or similar covering to form a structure for the shelter of persons, animals, or property. It doesn't say having four walls, or, so that if you have two units connected by a series of roofs, is exactly what that definition is, you have a building. And so I would submit that this plan meets those definitions. And again, I believe the town council has indicated that, that that call is to be made by the building commissioner, and I think implicitly he has made that.
Right.
So I would offer that. And the other thing is that, very briefly, on the driveways, what they're talking about is where these driveways are in the public layout, in the layout of the public way. If you look at the plan on the properties themselves, which is what this board regulates, those driveways are, are separated in accordance with the bylaw. So those are my comments. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. DeShala?
Just one comment back to the opposing attorney is that this board has approved in the past two-family structures connected by a roof. Mr. Davenport has built, development has built several of them within the town of Harwich. It's just a reminder to the board that they already have happened.
Right. Thank you. Mary?
So that was going to be my first point. So, you know, to, to say that this is a new, a new thing for this board is not true. We have many two-families that are connected by a series of roofs or common roofs. There are all the Davenport two-family capes. There are two capes connected by, by a roof in the middle. Many of them have double driveways. So this is not necessarily something new. I, I understand, I think my comments are not going to be, make many of you happy in this room, but in Massachusetts, we don't have the right to permit for aesthetics. So we don't get to say how big it is if they meet all of the setbacks and they meet all the coverage requirements by the special permit. So this application is, doesn't have any waivers as of right now. We have regularly approved with this board and our predecessors for many years before I was on this board, and I've been on the board since 2016. We've regularly approved two families with a common shared roof that are really two separate buildings with a common roof. This may be the first one that you're seeing in Harwich Port, but it's not unusual across town. The size of the building is going to be governed by other things. It's going to be governed by the zoning bylaw and the building commissioner when an application is, is put in. If the coverages are, are within the limits of the zoning bylaw, there is very little for us to look at in that respect. You know, town council has opined on the nonconformity and that it, it's, the town council's, with, with respect to the frontage on Mile Street, town council has opined that the drive, that there is a driveway as a matter of right. I know you folks are referring to it as a roadway. It's not a roadway. It's a driveway. It's a second accessory driveway that comes off of, of Grassy Pond with respect to its, how it got there. If it needs to move, that I'm not sure of. I'm not sure of where it is in relation to the plan that we see tonight. But issues with safety, always go to the building commissioner and go to the police department with respect to access and egress. And just to clarify what, what council here has said, each of us on our road, on our roadways, there's typically the paved road, and then there is the shoulder that's still in the right-of-way, that's actually town-owned land, that's, or it has an easement over it that the town owns that looks like your, your property. So when you're looking at, at the cars coming out, it is very possible that, that that point where you're, where you're meeting and where it looks like you're very close together isn't actually in the roadway, isn't actually on your land. It's actually in the right-of-way. So I think that's kind of the, the point on, on the clarification on it. So, you know, whether, whether they're too close, that's, I, I don't know that that's for us to, to even know at this very point with what we're looking at. I understand that it is a, a heavily populated street. I get that. And I get that there are, there is a lot of, there are a lot of cars coming up and down that street for all of your existing houses. And, and I understand it's, you feel it's a safety issue, but I have, I really have a hard time saying that a couple of additional cars for an additional home on an accessory driveway, that they have the right to, to put in, whether they build another house to make it a two-family on that lot as well. That driveway, council's opined they have as a matter of right. So if it has to get moved, if it has to get changed slightly, that's another whole story. They still have access to their property from Grassy Pond, which is the public way, which means anybody can traverse it. So it, it's, it's not an easy, it's not an easy answer for, for any of us. But I don't see how we can say this is not similar to a Davenport property, except that it is a larger dwelling unit. And I don't, I don't believe that we have the right to, to turn something down because it's a larger dwelling unit. If they meet all of the other requirements and if they have their, they have a conforming septic, which has nothing to do with us and everything to do with the, the border health, I, I don't see how we turn it down, so.
May I ask you a question? The ZBA issue about frontage, and is that something that should be concern of this board at this point?
So I believe the town planner had confirmed for me at the beginning of, of the session that council had opined that it's related to the existing building on the frontage and what, and what the building commissioner has the right to decide is whether
It's still going to reverse it, right.
Or the, whatever is getting built additionally is in conformance, so.
Right.
That's... Doesn't sound like council has said it's our decision. It's the building... It's the building commissioner's.
Okay. Yeah, thanks.
And presumably, if he says no, then they have a second avenue to go to the zoning board of appeals to appeal the building commissioner's decision. So...
The other thing is I... So are we at a point where we're going to close the hearing here, or...
It's... You guys have to... The board has to decide whether they're ready to decide or not.
Please, this is the last we...
Apart from all the other things, with due respect...
Just for the record, so we can have our minutes...
My name is Edward Pendergast. I'm married to the wonderful woman that spoke before.
Thank you.
And these driveways are not close. They merge. And there is no room for the other driveway to go left or right. There is just no way. They are together. And I'm not sure that you understood that when you said, maybe the driveway could be moved. It can't be moved.
But that could be in the public way, ma'am, is my point.
I understand, but if it was in the public way or their way, an accident could happen when the two people are driving out there.
Ma'am, if you want to speak, you have to go to the...
Right. This is... We don't have a discussion here. This is... We have presentation and feedback. So the board is now deliberating whether or not we have sufficient information to close a public hearing.
Just one comment?
Please.
I want to give... I know this has been... I've been at every meeting on this issue. I want to give credit to the applicant for making changes. We went through about eight months, I felt like, of making no changes. And reading the letter from the family, reducing it by 16%, making the changes on the roof, we finally got to some point of collaboration, which had been really the sticking point for all those months. So I want to give you credit for that, that we're not kind of in that loop that we started however months ago. So thank you for doing that. It may not seem like a lot, but this is... This was progress we hadn't had in eight or 10 months. And it doesn't... It's not going to please everyone. I think that's what Mary's trying to say. We can't please anyone. We're now at the limits by what lawyers have told us, by definitions and significant...
And precedent, yeah.
Precedent and testimony. So thank you for at least getting to some point in collaboration.
Harry, please.
I would commend the neighbors for taking a stand, sticking up for what you believed in. That, you know, Tip O'Neill once said, "All politics is local." This is local politics at its best. But I don't see how we're going to be able to bring the issues here into any sharper focus by letting the clock run out on the night. I think we've heard... At this point, we know what we've heard. We've heard that both sides have had more than adequate opportunity to present their arguments. We've looked closely at the bylaws. We've heard from the town council. And I think we have, as far as I'm concerned, I will speak only for myself, I have more than enough information to be able to render a conclusive opinion on this as, you know, in my role as a member of this board. So I don't see where else we can go from here.
So should we have a motion to close the hearing?
I'll make a motion to close the hearing.
Second.
Grab a second. Do we have any further discussion?
Just clarification. This is a supermajority, correct?
I believe it is, right? Yep. Supermajority.
It's five out of six.
Correct. So we have a motion and a second. That was a discussion. Any further? On favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion is unanimous. At this point, I think the business at hand is to kind of see where we lie here. I think Ms. Maslowsky has laid out sound reasoning. I'm sympathetic with that. I'm sympathetic with what Mr. Munz has said. My belief is that in compliance with what we've heard from the public, we actually do take the safety business. I just want to address that. Safety is a primary concern here. But since we're not the experts, since we're the board, we rely on input from the town, from the police department, from the fire department. We also rely on, you know, traffic studies as they come to us. And, you know, the kind of statistical analysis that both members of the public and their attorney have brought to us, as well as the, you know, the applicants. I mean, this is a very rich set of facts. But I do think it's very difficult to escape, as Ms. Clark had said, the definitional constraints put on the board. You know, we've got an applicant that has gone... Played by the rules. And I think it's very difficult to escape that reality, especially the, you know, the clarity with which the town has responded to most of these issues. So that's about all I have to say. I don't know. Do we have any further comments before we entertain a motion? Well, who's going to present the motion this evening, then? This last time through, are you? I think that we waited, so...
Thanks. So I would leave it that this board approve the following findings of fact. One, the applicant is George and Karen Oliver of Oliver Homes LLC. The applicant's representative is Kent Rochella. The locus is 86 Miles Street, assessors map 14 parcel B9. The zoning district is rural low density, and the development type is residential. The applicant submitted a special permit application on 10/24/23, which was duly advertised in the Cape Cod Chronicle on November 9th and November 16th, 2023. A hearing on the special permit, public hearing, was opened on 11/28/23 and continued until today, January 9th, 2024, where the board held a public hearing. The... With respect to the opinions from the building commissioner and town council, I'd just like to make them a part of the record that the building commissioner and town council have addressed three issues for us. One, that the property contains 47,565 square feet of area and 127.66 feet of lot frontage on Mile Street in the residential low-density district, which requires 40,000 square feet and 150 feet of frontage. Therefore, the property is not conforming astrofrontage on Mile Street. Additional acts... Two additional access to the budding public road would be allowed as a matter of right. The proposed application does have an additional access to Grassy Pond. And that council has opined that, three, the proposed roof covering the walkway connecting the two dwelling units is, quote, "a common roof or series of roofs." The proposed... So such that the proposed structure does qualify as a two-family dwelling unit. The application and hearing documents included the following. One, Form A and project narrative. Two, site plan and zoning compliance table by East-Southeast LLC dated 3/3/23, revised 10/18/23. Three, a building floor plan and elevation set pages A4 and A5 by Zebra and McCarthy LP. Four, color rendering, which is two pages of the proposed project by Imperial Landscaping and Masonry. Five, 10 pages of photos and renderings of the proposed project. Six, and a butter application. Seven, an application fee. Eight, public correspondence. In addition, the board reviewed letters received from neighbors who oppose the original and current application. They included letters from the Connollys, the Cummings, Mr. Dinoffrio, Ms. Hagan, the Johnsons, the McCarthys, Mr. Moyno, Ms. O'Leary, Mr. Sheehan, the Sistons, Ms. Smith, the Sistmas, the Tobins, and Mr. Witty. At this point, the board makes further findings that one, the proposal does contain a common roof or series of roofs connecting the dwelling units. Two, that the location is in the RL zoning district and the size exceeds the required 40,000-square-foot minimum lot requirement. C, the floor area for such unit exceeds the minimum required 800 square feet. And D, there will be two off-street parking spaces per unit. Further, the board finds pursuant to Section 325-51 of the town zoning bylaw that the use as developed and as shown on the application will not adversely affect the neighborhood. Two, that the specific site is an appropriate location for such a use, structure, or condition. C, that there will be no nuisance or serious hazard to vehicles or pedestrians. And that adequate and appropriate facilities will be provided for the proper operation of the proposed use. This includes the provision of the appropriate sewage treatment facilities which provide for denitrification when the permit granting authority deems such facilities necessary for the protection of drinking water supply wells, ponds, and saltwater abeyments. And I think I'm good.
We have a motion. We have a second.
Second.
We have a second. Any further discussion? Any changes before we enter this? Hearing none? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed?
So then I would... Then I would further move that the board that the board grant a special permit for two-family dwelling in order to build a second residential structure connected by a roof or series of roofs at the location at 86 Miles Street, assessors map 14 parcel B9, which is located in the RL zoning district, subject to the following conditions. And if you bear with me... Nope. Nope. Those are findings. Those are conditions. Right here. Can I have the staff report from the... I've got it right here. So subject to the following conditions. One, that the proposed two-family shall be in accordance with the application and materials submitted. That this special permit decision shall run with the property. This decision shall not be affected until it is recorded with the Brunswick County Registry of Deeds. That changes to the site not authorized under this decision will require further planning board review and modification to this decision. And that the applicant shall conform to the inspection certification and as-built plan requirements outlined in the code of the town of Harwich.
We have a motion?
Second.
We have a second. Any further discussion? Any amendments, changes to the language? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.
Thank you very much.
We have concluded the business for this evening's meeting. Mary, as you'll notice, we kind of played around with the order of... No. I want to thank you for making it here and making sure that we were able to accomplish all the business of the evening. I want to thank Christine for excellent presentation and representing the town so well for us tonight. Thank you so much. We're off to a great start and a great year. And I wanted to reiterate to all of us on the board here that we do have, again, an opening with the resignation of Craig. So if you know people in your orbit, you know, that think that they'd make a good fit, please reach out and we'll, you know, they'll come to the... I guess to the clerk and to the select board. Any further business before the board?
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
I'll second that motion to adjourn.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.